Today is Monday, November 6, 2017, and all members are present with the exception of Betty Davis. And we turn to the superintendent, but the first item for discussion is our assessment update.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and I will get this uploaded myself. So on the items on the work session today, we, it is kind of echoing. Is that okay? I'll sit back some. We were requested and actually had a carryover from last meeting, just some general 30,000-foot view on assessment in the district. We also will be having a Q demonstration as well as a presentation from our Indian Ed parent group prior to our focus on staff and students, which is delightful, and that will occur at 5:30. So to begin, I will just share some information on assessment, and I hope that this would be interactive, not just, so please ask questions to get a better understanding of ASD and assessments. I just wanted to start first, and I had sent this out prior earlier in the year when we heard from many teachers as well as principals that, oh, my word, this new curriculum we have really challenged us. I mean, it's, we heard that maybe it was thought to be developmentally inappropriate, that it was too difficult for kids. And just, we had shared that transition of standards over time in the Anchorage School District, and, or actually in the state of Alaska, rather, and if you see Alaska down in blue, if, we don't get As on very many things, but we have an A now ranked nationally from a National Standards and Assessment Group that in 2005, our expectations or our standards for outcomes for students was D. We did an upgrade in 2011, and they continued to rank us at a D. In 2013, they gave us a D+, and since these last standards were Common Core were aligned, and Anchorage moved to Common Core initially, the state has what's called the Alaska Standards or the Standards for Alaska, however, short of syntax changes, they're the Common Core. So it was just kind of a hot topic, a political topic, but as you can see, out of the 50 states, we happen to be ranked number 13. So is the content and expectation and expectations, are they different? Absolutely. They've really, over time that I've been teaching, have, we've been asked teachers to do more with kids and kids to learn more. So I wanted to start there because that pieces in when we talk about standards, at the same time, we should talk about instruction and curriculum and assessment. It's very difficult to pull those items apart from each other. It's our business. It's what we do. So with that, I'll start with the idea of assessment, and we've heard it as the new assessment or assessments, we take time, and we don't know sometimes whether you're talking about PEAKS or MAP or, say, your chapter test, but here's just an idea of very simple terms. I taught Stripe how to whistle. I don't hear him whistling. I said I taught him. I didn't say he learned it. Therein lies why we have assessment, to know, is what we thought would happen, happened. We, you know, we expect that honestly in other industries. When you take your car to the shop, you expect some assessment to be done and some guarantee that what you're paying for, you, your car got fixed, or when you're, I have an example when swim lessons or assessments for, you're hoping that people in other industries such as the medical industry or, I suppose, environmental industries, whatever it could be, have assessments and have a minimum standard of which they can be measured against. So in a sense, that's our assessments, and assessments really can be understood in tiers, and it's not necessarily what the assessment is, but the tier reflects back to how they are used. How is the data used in each tier? Because there are some assessments that could, or a task or assessment that could really be found in each of those tiers. So assessment really is everywhere and essential part of teaching and learning process. It's a process of gathering information about student learning to inform education-related decisions. And assessments can reflect a wide variety of learning targets using a range of methods serving many important users and uses at a variety of levels. So we use different assessments determining who the user is as well as what we're going to use it for. So if you look at the top and the word summative or summative, whichever you like to say, is evaluative. It's predictive, and it's generally, a lot of times, high stakes, and it can be in some areas, and I'm going to go into detail about examples of these tests in a minute. Interim is really like its name says, it is in the interim, and so that can be used as evaluative, predictive, middle of the course, or to instructional correction. So I teach a kid. I'm going to see if it worked in the interim. If it doesn't, I might change how I'm teaching or how I'm grouping. There might be some other indicator that I'm going to use to find that out. And then finally, formative is diagnostic. A lot of times, it is more at the classroom level, and it just informs instruction. So formative, you can hear the word inform in there, or form. Interim, in between, and then summative as summary or summation. So if we take a look, we have examples for summative. We have, it could be something like a PEAKS test, which is our state test. It used to be AMP, it used to be SBA. It's more of, that test is used more as an autopsy after the fact than it is to predict. It takes, it comes too late in the year to assist the teacher teaching the kids at that grade level how to change instruction. It's really about, at the end of what we expected, what was the outcome? MAP testing really falls, it could fall in any one of these, and that's the measures of academic progress. We could have an end-of-the-course map. You could say, what does it look like at the end of the year? End of courses, so we've always had finals, if you will. I think each of us probably in our high school and college, maybe even maybe middle school, you would say, oh, man, it's the end of the semester. I have finals, or my semester finals, or I have my year-long finals. Finals or a final test is a summative test. It's after all the teaching and learning is done, what was actually there. So the idea that summative tests are just the kinds of PEAKS really isn't true. We've really used throughout instructional history, we've used summative tests. In a discussion I had today with Mark, really, the difference is, is it used to be only a teacher tool. Teachers use this to gauge what teachers taught and what students learned. Now, there's really this third party out there saying, our state and federal government saying, what's the return on the investment? How are we doing as compared to other states? So some assessments that come at the end, we've used internally. Now they've designed some, you know, for the end, to ask other questions, maybe that we don't think, you know, that we want to answer or have to answer. If you were to get a law degree, you're passing a bar. That's a summative assessment. If, really, in so many industries, if you want to be a mechanic and get a license through KCC, you have to take a summative assessment by a third party. Our CNA, a summative assessment by a third party. They're not driven by us, although in order to ensure that our kids have the qualifications and skills to meet that job requirement, we actually give quite a bit of summative assessments at KCC. It's an assessment party house over there because the flux core welding, automotive, everything. So that's just to give you an idea of summative assessments. Interim, of course, our MAP or AmesWeb. Midterms, if you are at the mid of a term, whether it's a semester or a year, and as well as chapter and unit tests. If I'm teaching, teaching, teaching and wondering, okay, if the chapter that I just taught on slope intercept, I wonder if the kids got it. I might do a quiz in the interim. I might, a lot of times, bell assignments, if you've heard that. We use that quite often where there's, when a kid's come to class, the first five minutes of the class on the whiteboard, there might be some problems. Teachers are going to ask them to do them and turn them in, and then the teacher, sometimes that is an interim kind of assessment to, I taught this. I'm going to see if they know it in the interim so I can move on. And so it's, again, these kinds of tests are in the use of them, not just in the name. Okay? So it's how we use assessments as we instruct and go through our curriculum as well. So finally, formative is maybe program assessments as well, whether it's your reading program, math program, science program. Teacher observations. Observation is the, probably the most used formative assessment. I'm going to see if the child that I just taught can do what I taught. We integrate these into our instruction daily, and a lot of times, a formative assessment is progress monitoring for AmesWeb, that we use, AmesWeb is actually a curriculum-based measure, meaning you're using the curriculum, reading, to see if kids are gaining in reading. It's that simple. And so they're, they help improve teacher professional practice by providing a continuous process of gathering evidence to make inferences, all designed to increase higher levels of student cognition. So the idea of tests, we have so many tests, we have so many assessments, I'm in the point of going, well, yeah, we always have and we always will. It's just that now, people on the outside are paying attention just as much as the people on the inside, and that's what makes us uncomfortable. But honestly, the world's flat. I think many people wanted to ensure that kids in the United States, kids in Alaska can compete anywhere, and that's taking a look and saying, where, where are kids learning and how are we learning? And frankly, we use it to ensure that our student groups are all learning. We took a look last year and demonstrated that there were certain student groups that weren't making the achievement of others. We didn't say, oh, those students. We said, we looked at our instruction to say, what are we doing? What's our school organization? How are we instructing? What's our classroom makeup? What are we doing that only certain kids are successful in our system? So there's lots of reasons to use them. It has said that formative is actually the most effective for teaching. So before we move on to the next slide.
Yeah, just for the record, I want to note that Betty Davis has joined us. Also, the question, if you go back one slide, in terms of summative, we also have to put out there in the sense of third-party monitoring, is the NAEP tests that are done. I know it's not every school, and I know it's every other year, but that's definitely something that people are looking at in terms of our high stakes.
Correct, and that's the National Assessment of Education Progress, and that is run by the federal government. And if you receive federal money, you have to participate, since we do. We participate, and it is a supposedly a random selection, but Anchorage will always be randomly selected because of our size in the state, and they actually send outside people to come in. They bring their assessments. You literally lock them. At the time, I was a principal. They would lock them in a safe, and you had to witness that they were locked in the safe so nobody could get them and cheat, and these outside folks would commandeer a teacher's classroom and give these assessments to kids, and then they would be sent off. The kids in the school never receive information about it. Only state data is then collected by grade level. So NAEP takes our time and kids' time in schools, only certain selected, randomly selected, but it is definitely, it's a private organization coming in. Actually, in summative, we want kids to be able to take an SAT and not freak out. We want them to take ACTs. We want them to take the work keys, and so, and we hope that, we encourage our kids, and we'd like to move to this even if we can take more, take many iterations of the SAT and ACT because you're going to improve as you take it. And so the idea to buffer kids against assessment, to me, is, in the 21st century, is a bad move, that we are charged with this, and it's really, how do we come to the table with assessments? We don't want to judge. It's the manner in which we present them. It's like, let's do our best. We want to get to this level. What do you want to do? Let's help you do it. Again, I've used this term over and over, and it's not an I gotcha. We never want to do an I gotcha. We want to use it to move forward, actually.
Any other important members have questions?
So an idea, a way to look at this in the simplest form is, the little Kathy Moffett found this cartoon for us where it says formative, and it says, a formative assessment, if you think if you were a cook, it's when the chef tastes the soup. So you're the one doing it, and you're tasting the soup. And if you looked, go back to the other one. If you look at the top one, I'm going to need more specific feedback on my formative assessments. So bad dog, formative assessment would tell you, you know, what didn't the dog do? Is the dog potty-ing? Is the dog this? You know? So formative just give you more information about what, as I'm going along, teaching it. So even the picture of this teacher getting response from her class is a formative assessment. Having kids orally repeat after you or words that they're just learning sight words, maybe, that's a formative assessment, and again, it's just to gather the information that you need. The next one is interim, we really want to monitor student learning, and so we do this, and we use AmesWeb midterm exams in a subject and MAP as interim. We're having a major discussion now about if kids are on track, and we know that from the beginning of the year, MAP, MAP is so predictive with the Common Core, that you can say, if you get a certain RIT score, which is the unit of measurement for MAP, in the beginning of the year, and we just teach, 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 that kid's going to be fine. And I would say, and my philosophy is, we don't give kids an assessment we're not going to use. There is right now conversation in the district that, no matter what, every kid should get the middle of the year, and we really have to come to grips with that about, well, if we use it, then we do it. If we don't use it. Interestingly enough, parents are, I'm pretty much more interested in MAP sometimes than they are in the report card at the elementary and middle levels because it is actually letting them know how their kid is doing against a percentile of millions of students in the nation. So the norming group, in a criterion reference norm group, they have a select, so our Terra Novas that we used to use, they used a norm group of about 2,000 kids in a certain part of the country, and where MAP just takes an aggregate of all kids who take the assessment. So consequently, and AmesWeb does the same thing, consequently, kids are getting smarter as standards are changing, and those cut scores, if you will, or expectations for grade levels are actually increasing over time. AmesWeb is a definite evidence of that, that kids are getting smarter. So if you use your entire group as your mean, it's, and kids are getting smarter, then your expectation is rising in those assessments as well. But an interim, it falls between summative and formative, and it's called a benchmark or medium cycle assessments. Interim assessments are administered every quarter or maybe three times a year. I'm going to show you a picture of a teacher in fourth grade's classroom in ASD, and I'm going to get into a little bit more detail just so you see this. So the red lines are really divided primarily by the fourth column over, percentile, and a percentile is a number that indicates the percentage of observations or tests or kids that are under that. So if I'm in the one first percentile, there's not many, very many below me in the nation. So these is, again, normed over millions, 20 million, 20 million kids. So if you're in the first percentile, that is, needs a lot of intervention to move up. So this is literally one of our teachers' classes, and if you look, it's grade four. There's different test dates. I'm sure 929 was different because they couldn't give the assessment the same time as everyone else because they probably had some supports to give it. The RIT is called the ROSH Unit, and that is just a unit that was designed by And that is just a unit that was designed by this, these psychometricians probably. And the standard deviation of error is generally three. But the ROSH unit is used no matter whether you're a fourth grader or a 10th grader. So it's more like a yardstick. So you could put a yardstick against me and a yardstick against Member Holloman, and we're going to get a measurement of our height based on that yardstick, not that, maybe I'm a little older than Mr. Holloman. So we're not going to change it. And we're not going to make the measurement according to a grade level. But then you can interpolate it to a grade level. So the ROSH unit is just the specific measurement they use. And it gives a range where kids are. So if you look at the top, that child scored at 145, and the standard deviation of error is between 141 and 149. Okay? If you look at the bottom, that student scored a 220 in the same grade, in the same class. Would you think that the instruction for these two kids should look different? Yeah, we should teach differently. We should figure out how we can help. And that's really the idea behind RTI and MTSS. An individual teacher with this much variance by him or herself to address this is, it's immense. That's why systems need to be, that's why we have a systematic approach to addressing needs. But I'm going to go through this just so you know what each of these is. So that's the RIT. The next one is percentile. And if you look, the red lines are, the fifth percentile are below, below the 40th percentile. And then the other, the division was at the 70th percentile. So those are four different groups of kids that we could possibly instruct, have different needs in that category. Did you?
Is this MAP or language arts?
I am not, oh, Lexile reading, probably, reading. So the percentile I shared, if I'm at the 42nd percentile, that means all the observations prior to that or all the kids' tests before that, I'm better than 41% of them. Okay? So that's your percentile. So then Lexile range is really a readability score. So BR is basic reading. It's not even first grade. BR is below first grade. So this teacher in one of our schools has a child at the very bottom, 861. This second grader is reading at the sixth grade level. It doesn't mean the child knows everything to know, all the content before sixth grade. It means that you can present content in a more complex manner to this child, that the reading ability is higher. If I teach to the middle, which is the tier-one need, probably between the 40th and the 70th percentile, that child is not going to get what he or she deserves. The same as the basic reader is not going to get what he or she deserves. Okay? So that's why we moved into this, understanding of using assessments to help us organize better. Tier three, basically, we call that a replacement core. Our curriculum in fourth grade, if that child is basic reading, they can't even access the curriculum. They're too in need to access our curriculum in fourth grade. So we would have a replacement curriculum, probably very basic to teach them phonics, phonemic awareness, I mean, the building blocks of reading they don't have. So that's, I already know that just from looking at this. Tier two is that these kids can access our core curriculum, our general ELA curriculum, but they're going to need more. They're going to need core plus more. Most likely, the vocabulary they've never heard before or they don't have a schema theory to understand it. Our curriculum that we purchased, if you recall, the special education and ELL, they shared that it has additional resources to help. That's what we mean by the core plus more. So they don't get taken out. They stay in there, but they also get more, what we call walk to reading sometimes, core plus more. Tier one, this is the general class where we say we teach to the middle, the majority of kids. That's tier one. We want to do that, but we always differentiate because there's going to be somebody who's just a whippersnapper at, you know, at the 69th percentile, maybe reads a little bit better. But generally, they can have access to the same understanding initially. And then core plus acceleration. Sometimes it's a replacement for accelerated kids. Sometimes they just move up a grade level. But acceleration does not mean more stuff to do. Acceleration means that it should be more complex. You have a child's mind that actually can understand more. But the worst thing you can do, especially for our young little boys, is to pile on more stuff for them to do because then they, honestly, girls will, generally, at this age level, I taught this age level, they'll generally obey. Boys are like, what? If I am smart, I'm going to get more? Let me do something else with my time. And their little brains can think up a lot. So it's not just boys, but you know what? I would say, they're pretty active. So we need to meet their needs as well. So this is literally one of our fourth-grade classrooms, a real teacher, working with this range. And the MAP shares the information that can allow us to target the reading ability level that they know and how to improve it. The percentile where they are, that can, kind of a percentile in their grade. And then the RIT, I can have, that RIT at fourth grade, 93rd percentile, is probably similar. They're on the same learning level as somebody in the upper, like, two grades higher. It doesn't mean, again, that they know the content of those grades. It just means that they could learn those grades very easily and very quickly.
And so maybe your subsequent slides are going to address this. But so if this is the case with this teacher, they're going to be working primarily with the kids in the tier one and doing the differentiation in different groupings of things? Or they're going to be working with all of these levels in the same classroom?
We had, that's a great question. Madam President, we've had different examples. Schools really have set this up differently. So we, last year, we talked to some schools who came and, you know, you talked to Ocean View, who's now at Chinook, and Anita, who moved from Chinook to Cassoon. And they shared. And Anita has classroom, so if they need a replacement core, a lot of times that is done in a separate classroom, in a special education classroom. The core plus more sometimes is met in the classroom with the teacher, or it could be in a walk to reading. So everybody in tier one and tier two is in my general class, except for when we walk to reading. The bottom three folk, actually, everybody would walk to a different specification level. Everybody could walk to a teacher that taught the skills for that level. So we're all going to read kind of the story together, have the gist of it, but we're going to get it. So sometimes the teacher, him or herself, organizes in small groups or workshop, has some kids working over here while I'm in it, instruct these. Some schools have organized it school-wide, like Chinook did, to where at a certain time of day, they gather all the resources from the librarian to every teacher that could possibly teach to make the classes really small in the kids' walk to reading. That's what that walk to reading is called. So it's done very differently. Other grades and other schools, I participated and was a principal in a school that each of the three teachers had a specialty. I would teach the advanced kids. I would do the middle kids. Somebody else would do the reteaching. So the kids at reading time would, from every single third grade, would go into a different third grade according to their need. And then at every quarter, you'd reassess it, and they would move again to find out what's their need and their level. So MAP allows you to have fluid groups. That's why we continue to assess so that someone isn't put in a classroom and stays there because the goal is to get them out of the tier. The goal is to get them to tier one. And so we have to have fluid groups for that. But this is how we use this assessment. I'll leave it for questions now.
For the record, Kaylee Spencer has joined us.
All right, welcome. Next, we have summative, or summative, which just, there's a summit on that mountain, so we can say summit. So that is when the guests taste the soup. Before, formative was when the chef tastes the soup. And when the guests taste the soup, that's from the outside saying, how did we do? And a lot of times, you'll have a course final in high school. Our language immersion, I think it's called step?
Stamp.
Stamp. They have to take a stamp test to get the biliteracy diploma. That is an assessment that we give. SATs, ACTs, end of course test for finals week, those are all summative. It's how we use them. The test, interestingly enough, that was the benchmark for our reading program. They're very common in math and reading programs at the primary level. And you would call it a pretest anywhere else. I'm going to pretest the kids to see what they know, and then I'm going to test them again to see if they learned again, and then I'm at the end. So that, in some of our schools, was used, really, again, it's kind of the delivery and the understanding of how to use it, more so than the assessment itself. Because in many of our schools, it wasn't a problem at all. Folks that, for years, they've studied assessments. So it was used, really, benchmarking is kind of as a, let me take it, pretest. But it's what they're supposed to learn by the end. We don't really have a summative test for first graders, but it was for reading, what do they know at the beginning, middle, and end, kind of. I liken it to, you know, my, if you've ever had your kids in swim lessons, there's levels of swim lessons, and you get this little report card. And the report card, in order to get from lesson one, I remember, to lesson, explaining to my daughter, lesson two, you don't get to move up unless you do 10 bobs. So literally, the first day of swim lessons, they have that assessment out, and they're making them do, go through all the different skills that they're going to have to know. About four lessons come apart, and they're testing the kids again. Finally, if they can do the 10 bobs up and down by the time, and plus all this other stuff, then they get to move to level two. If they don't, they stay in level one. I mean, that's how our swim lessons work. So it's kind of interesting. We use large-scale, you know, interim and formative assessments for lots of things you can think of. And I bet you can think of something in your job that might have some of these. But they shouldn't be seen, I would, and we want to get to a place where assessment isn't seen as a standalone. And it is a standalone when we don't utilize it to help us get better, to help a kid learn more or to help a teacher teach better. We don't necessarily need assessments if we don't use them to help us become better at our craft. So it is about teaching and weighing and judgments and achievement and expectations. And it goes hand in hand with our curriculum and our instruction to meet the standards that were set out for Alaska's kids. And that's assessment for today.
Any board members have questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Marset.
The assessment that you put together for the Go Math, how is that going? Because at one time, it was not mandatory. And so it was based on whether a school wanted to use it or a teacher wanted to use it. And so how many of our schools or teachers are?
Through the president, to the vice president, I can ask Mark the actual, and I'll share behind that. So the idea that benchmarking is, in order to approve, improve, we need to kind of see, how are we moving as a district through our, what we're teaching? So when we teach something, do kids learn it? And there was, there is a benchmark for the map, for the book, Go Math. But when we found out, nobody used it. So when we, we saw that it was kind of a big task, so they designed an online task that would give us the data to, like, track us. Like, do we need more professional development in teaching third-grade kids probability? You know, I mean, we're trying to figure out what we need. And when it came down to it, it was kind of another thing like deer in the headlights. What, a test? Oh, my gosh. So we said, you know what? On a lot of these, I've just been putting the hold because I realized the need of, just the general understanding of why you would even use it. So they couldn't, you know, while we use our, we give a chapter test at the end of, you know, a grade, and we give a grade for it. What we really needed wasn't the grade. We needed what the kids could actually do or not. Like, so what constructs do they understand and not? And we figured, well, we're going to have to, let's find a way to do this. So rather than freaking everybody out, we're working with principals to understand overall assessment. And so some schools that have it are like, this is easy. What are you guys talking about? And others are like, okay, thanks for letting me work with my group. I can get a report in the Board Connect about how many we've collected, how many folks are doing it. Dr. Stock is working with our math expert. But again, it was to say, are our kids moving along a trajectory to a final outcome of the standards? We have no way of knowing that. So we've kind of, I put the hold on it to say, yeah, nobody even understands why, which really is huge because really, assessment and teaching and learning go hand in hand. So we're just trying to piece it all together to know how we can help folks.
Ms. Marset?
So, and again, my understanding too was that with doing this assessment, it would, because some of the basics, I think, were being taught in this, and so that may be where our children are having struggles. And so doing this district-wide, we could identify those areas that were consistent with each student to see where our gap is in the book or the curriculum or whatever.
Yeah, that's exactly right. We've had teachers share and principals share that Go Math is very weak in facts.
Right.
And there, you need to know your facts so that your brain can focus on other things, higher cognition later on. You know, you're going to get stuck in algebra if you have to figure out what six times seven is every time you go to see it. You know, you should just know what that is so that your brain power can be used on something else. And that was what they said. So we wanted to gather information to say, where is it weak? And we just, we just pulled it off because of the stress level, so. But that is exactly why we would use it, what you said.
One more. So it'll be interesting, when we get the numbers from Mr. Stock, if we're seeing any kind of patterns with those that are actually doing the assessment now.
Yep, absolutely, we'll get it. And I think we'll have enough to let us know to help everybody. But the consensus is thus far from the math teachers that meet is that we're lacking in basic facts. An assessment, believe it or not, for basic facts to ensure that when they leave third grade, do they know their multiplication and everything under it is what? And in some schools, I mean, I know that some schools, I know Northern Lights, they actually get assessed by the principal. And you don't, you know, you kind of get an award and stuff, but the principal is the one that makes sure with cards, flashcards. So we just don't have a ubiquitous, universal way to ensure all kids are getting their facts. And therein lies the problem with higher-level math when that doesn't happen. And we can have that calculator argument, but still, it is actually the conceptual understanding of automaticity of basic facts that helps kids.
Okay, so I'm glad my section's over. Mr. Flock is done.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the board and the superintendent for giving us a few minutes here to talk a little bit about the Zangle to Q upgrade. And before I start, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, really, what we're going to go over this evening. And so I get to talk a little bit about the history of Zangle and Q. They really are the same system. They just had a name change between the old version and the new version. So we'll talk about that just a little bit. And then I get to invite a couple of my colleagues up to talk about the actual project rollout and how we do that, and then get right into Q and do a demo so you guys can see what that looks like. I know you've heard of a lot of information about Q this year, and so this will be a great opportunity for you to be able to actually see how some of that works. So tonight, we'll talk just a little bit about that process. So where did we actually start? When did we start the project? Who was involved with the project? Really, how we do most of our large projects. And then we'll move from that right in, right into demo. And so I'll get to the history real quick. So in 2009, and that's a little bit of a misnomer. That's when we actually rolled it out to schools. But this was a project that started back in 2007. And so we worked through the project. Previous to, previous to Zangle, we had an old system that was really done centrally. And so it was front office that worked on that system and IT, and that's just about it. And so when we rolled out Zangle, this was really a large change for our teaching force. And so we took a couple of years to actually do that implementation and then roll it out. And immediately after that, in 2010, the company Zangle itself, which was C Innovations, actually folded. So they, they went under. They, everybody showed up for work one day and all the doors were locked. And so it was interesting times because we had just implemented that. We had just kind of taken that big change. And because of that, we really felt like it would be difficult for us not to continue forward with that product for a little while. Fortunately, we were, we sort of thought ahead about those possibilities. Fortunately, we were, we sort of thought ahead about those possibilities, and we own the source code. And so what that means is when we bought it, we put a clause in our contract that says, we own the source code, and if you guys go under, we can still run it, we can still make changes to it, we can still do all of that. So we went on what's called self-support. And we did self-support for a couple of years. So we didn't have a vendor, just our folks at IT took care of those things. And then during that timeframe, there was a large court battle between what was previously C Innovations and this new company called Equitas. So Equitas is the new company that owns Q now, and they really are the same guys that wrote Xangle to begin with, they just spun off when that got closed, and they opened up a new, a new company. The reason for the name change is they really didn't want to have all that baggage that came with the Xangle closure. And so this is not a new system for us, this is really just an upgrade. And with that introduction, I would like to bring up Julia Melson, who is our project management office supervisor, and Andy Klup, who most of you guys have met before. He is our senior director of IT applications and ed tech, so that they could run through the rest of the deck. And then I'll be here for questions at the end.
Good evening.
Hello, thank you, members of the board. So with our student information system, one of the approaches that we took is really to use a phased rollout of the system. So essentially, what that means is we took portions of the system, or in which case we call modules, and released them in a staggered release instead of upgrading the entire system at one time. So as you can see from the visual, essentially what that means for staff is that while we have upgraded to Q in some areas, we are still on Xangle in others. So our ultimate goal is to be completely upgraded to Q by the end of the 2018 calendar year. So the reason why we chose this method was really based on three components. One, the recommendation from the vendor, Equitas, as Mr. Fleckenstein referred to. And then second, we have had many discussions with several, several other school districts who have already upgraded to Q, and their recommendations as well were to roll it out in a staggered release. And then third, one of our primary focuses for this project really has been around support. And if we were to upgrade the entire system at one time, our training and support resources would be stretched very thin. So in order for us to really target and focus our training and support to a particular area, we can do that much more effectively if we do that with a staggered release. So another part of our projects always mean bringing in the staff that use the system and really ensure that we are engaging those stakeholders. So that always begins with first and foremost, identifying who that is going to be. And then from that point, we can really begin our initial communications and then start with our committee work. And whenever we bring in committees, we bring in a subset of the population of who is going to actually be using the system, and we provide them with a demonstration of the system, we bring them in, and we actually have them test it from in gradebook perspective, how it looks as a teacher. And then also, it's an opportunity for them to share their feedback, and that's feedback around the overall system, and also recommendations for training and support in the future. So then after that committee work is finished, we have an opportunity from the project team standpoint to come in and really adjust the system. So the actual student information system, but also our processes around the rollout, including the development of our training and support plans. So then that way, we can go in and actually deliver the trainings when we go live, and then ensure we have a solid support plan in place as well. So using gradebook as an example for our committee, what we did is we brought in 14 teachers, and then they spent the month of March over various meetings with the committee, receiving that demonstration and allowing time for feedback, and then also testing. And then they had until May 6th of 2016 to actually send us their results from the testing matrix as we developed. So this is a high-level look at the upgrade timeline. So as you can see, we began last August of 2016, and we started with nurses. So we rolled out the health module. And then shortly thereafter, we began rolling out to really the support staff here in the ed center, so services and programs. An example would be Indian education. And then in January, we rolled out enrollment and front office attendance. And the major impact there was on front office staff, which would include administrative assistants, secretaries, and also registrars. And then, of course, principals have that access as well. So then that brings us to this school year. And at the beginning of this school year, we, of course, we rolled out behavior, and then also all of the teacher applications, which include gradebook and classroom attendance as well. And then shortly after, in September, we turned on the Q student portal, so Student Connection. And next week, we will be going live with Q Parent Connection, which is that parent portal. So we've been working on the PR campaign for that one and working with communications and has sent out flyers to schools that they were able to disseminate during parent-teacher conferences. So these are the ones that we've worked on to date, and we're coming up shortly with scheduling in the spring. And then marks, which also means grades, and academic history being transcripts over the summer, and test history as well.
Ms. Marsette?
On your, I call it beta, I'm sure you guys do too, the 14, was it 14 teachers?
Correct.
Right. So how were they selected to be able to test this? What was the criteria for that?
Sure, Madam President, through the board. So we worked with the division directors at the time, executive directors, Mike Henry and Glenn Nielsen. And as many staff knew that we were preparing to roll this out, we had been getting feedback from different staff members hearing that this was coming and said, oh, if there's an opportunity, I'd like to be a part of this.
So how many were, those were actual teachers? All of those were actual teachers within the schools?
Correct. So some of the benefits that teachers have noted with the Q upgrade thus far have been, one, around teacher preferences. So what this means is that teachers now have the ability to set the screen when they log in to really view and display the information that they feel is pertinent to them. Additionally, they have the option to create groups. We were really excited to be able to offer this feature because it is something that they had been asking for for quite some time. But what groups allow teachers to do is to identify or exclude and assign tasks or assignments for a particular subset of students within their classroom, which can be beneficial for combo classes or a variety of reasons. So that has also been a very helpful feature for them. Also, mass emails allows teachers to send mass email communication to their students and their contacts. And then gradebook analytics is also now available. This is a new feature that some of the teachers have started to dig into a little bit more, and it provides them with some analysis of their actual gradebook. And it's something that we in our, we in IT are going to be providing some additional training and support on in the near future.
All right, so let's take a look at implementation issues. So anytime we're doing a project of this scale, obviously, there's a lot of things that can go right and a lot of things that can go wrong. So we kind of look at this, you know, what can you plan for and what can you prepare for? And so one of the critical things is in conjunction with the PMO office and my IT leads, we've got a whole group of people who are sitting there looking at a couple of different things. They're saying, okay, is we're getting ready to do a new business process? Maybe that's the gradebook, right? We're getting ready to unveil those teacher apps. Who are all the people that are going to use this? And what are their roles? Because even within the school district, right, we have many different types of teachers. And so that was part of what we tried to capture with the teacher group, because we've got special ed teachers and regular ed teachers and itinerant specialist teachers, and secondary, and the list goes on and on and on. The next thing is, okay, so based on these roles and the process that we're going to be implementing, what training do we need, right? So we sit down and we do a needs assessment and go, okay, what's the same, what's different, how's this going to change? And then last, we kind of look at the technical pieces. Because some of the things that we have to look at is, on the average day, you know, Q gets this type of usage, but on grade day, you know, grading day, all of a sudden, we see five times as many users. So are we prepared for the technical demands that are going to come out on these processes? So we kind of do that whole assessment piece. That's what I like to think of as the planning piece, right? But we also know, anybody who's been in IT long enough and not in IT long enough, no matter how much you plan, there is always going to be something unexpected happening, right? And so for us, that's kind of that stage where we pretty much start looking, okay, what resources do we have to bear? What can we bring available from a technical side? Who's, you know, do we have vacations planned appropriately? Do we have the vendors? Have we communicated with them to talk to them about, okay, this is a go-live for a major module for us, so we're going to need you on, you know, like, first call support? So we kind of go through and do all those things. And so kind of some examples of what that looks like is the training, like, that was the first one. So we kind of had a plan around training. We were using videos for the first time pretty extensively, and some sites really embraced that, and they had a process that worked for them. Some of them, just as something as simple as they didn't do their training until their third day of the, the beginning of the school year, but teachers were ready to jump into their gradebook, like, the day before they were even supposed to report back. And so people started doing some things wrong. So we kind of had this, okay, there's some things not working right here. So as soon as we did that, we sort of mobilized. Like, in preparation, I'd had my ed tech staff report back two weeks early. And so that whole time they were back, they were preparing training materials, they were kind of getting ready to go out and serve their schools, they were sending out messages. So as soon as we started seeing that there was that problem, we started reaching out to schools, saying, okay, well, we can come and do onsite trainings, even though we didn't plan on doing that. We started things like an FAQ for our help desk and other people, so that as new issues were emerging, we can immediately identify, find out, is that a real issue or is that just a training issue? And if it was a training issue, then we kind of resolve around that. So that's kind of more on the training issue. And the other one, that's a good example of this recently, was our marks reporting. So Xangle had a setting that if you left blank, it automatically defaulted to a certain timeframe. And Q, if you leave that blank, it just does nothing. And so that setting hadn't been set, and as folks went to start putting in their final marks, they are getting students on their list that had actually exited their course. And so what happened is some teachers looked through their list, and they're like, oh, those students aren't supposed to be here, and they just unchecked the box and didn't post a grade form. But for a lot of teachers, they just, you know, especially, like I joked, there's a lot of Xs and Zs right at the bottom there. You could have easily missed a kid who'd exited your class, you know, four weeks ago, and you may have accidentally submitted their grade at the time. So we kind of had to do some cleanup there. So as soon as we notified that, we immediately adjusted those dates so that then nobody else going forward was seeing those students. We made some adjustments in Q so that parents weren't seeing those duplicate grades right away, so that we weren't having parents, because they were going right into parent-teacher conferences. So, you know, that's kind of that idea, we're preparing for those things we planned for.
I have a quick question before we move on. Mr. Fleckenstein said that in the previous contract, we actually owned the source code. With this new company now that's, that's running the show, do we still own the source code, or do we have to rely on them to make the changes to programming?
Madam President, well, we, most of our contracts have a clause that kind of allows us to keep that code in case they ever go sort of bankrupt again, but it's actually kind of exciting now because we have a vendor to rely on. So in the past, it used to take a lot of extra time for us to troubleshoot those bugs. Now, we can turn those tickets over to their team of 15, 20 engineers that can actually work on that stuff for us. And so it's kind of, yes, we do have it, but luckily, we almost never have to touch it anymore because now we have real vendor support.
Thank you.
So one of the other pieces that we always go through within our project implementations is reflecting back on what we can improve upon and what we can do better. And with Q, because we are doing a staggered release, we have the luxury of looking at previous modules and being able to do that as we continue to move forward into other implementations. So with the gradebook piece, there were definitely some areas that we feel as though we can improve upon when looking forward to, say, the scheduling module release, for example. Some of those things that we would like to improve upon, looking at gradebook, was around the committee in general. So first and foremost, the number of committee members we had. So really looking to increase that to about 1% to 2% of our population, which would really set us at about 50 participants as opposed to the 14 that we had. And although that's a large group, I think we could have broken it down into smaller groups to really get that feedback that we needed. Additionally, ensuring that we have diversity amongst our participants and so that we ensure we have alternative and charter school representation. And third, from the committee piece, is the timing. We had the committee a little over a year prior to us actually going live in the system. With scheduling, our committees will be taking place in November in preparation for a roughly February, March release with scheduling. So really ensuring that we condense that time between the committee work and the go-live as well. The next piece that we would do differently is with regards to researching the roles. So we put a lot of focus on who is using the system, but we would like to do a better job with really digging in to the analysis, analysis of how they are each using the system differently. Because I think having a better understanding of how it is used differently will really help us answer some of those unknown pieces that Mr. Klup referenced in the slide prior. So the more uncovered potential issues we can really view from the beginning will help us to plan so that we're doing more planning as opposed to trying to prepare for the unknowns. And then the third, and also as Mr. Klup has mentioned, the training options. So we did use a primarily video-based platform for this gradebook rollout. And although that worked for the majority of our staff, we also realized that there is still a large subset of teachers who really benefit from written checklist of documentation and user guides and things of that nature. So ensuring that we have that in place for the next rollout as well.
Okay, so training and support. So this is just a quick overview of kind of what we did for the training and support this time around. So as mentioned, the primary focus was on videos. And so the ed tech team had put together basically two- to three-minute videos on most of the major things that you would do. So a task you do as a teacher, how do I take attendance? How do I add an assignment? How do I grade an assignment? And we did those really sort of bite-sized chunks, they're all up on YouTube, and I'll demo one of those later. We picked that platform because you can slow it down, you can speed it up, you can rewind it, so that's all part of the fun. But as we realized that videos weren't for everybody, we did a couple other things. So we basically just did a variety of different formats, including kind of open sessions. So in some cases, a principal had requested that we come to their school. Like, this was at a high school, and so what we did was, we actually had between two and three ed tech folks there waiting for anybody who needed help, so they could come during their planning period during that initial piece. And so folks kind of came in and out for that. We've done scheduled trainings where we've just gone in and either reiterated the trainings or shared new trainings for specific issues that somebody was having at a school, often at staff meetings or other times, before and after school. We've had TIS sessions, and so those are the Teacher Institute sessions, which basically are for after-hours PD, and so teachers could actually get hours towards continuing educational credits. And so that was kind of a nice way for some people who wanted that training anyways, they could come over to the ed center or several sites to get those trainings. Okay. Next is Support Central. And so this is just the support site that we're using for most of our major initiatives. And so we have a Xangle slash Q support site. They still have that Xangle on there just because there's like two modules left that we have to get rid of before we can change that completely to Q. But basically, this is just a site that all of the initiative, I mean, all the Q support materials go in there, there's a blog. Right now, it's a mix of both clerical staff and teacher materials, but kind of go more in-depth with that when I get to the demo.
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, Andy, they've got these TVs, and I'll get this, three seconds.
Okay. All right, well, let's take a look, starting out with the support resources. So there was actually three different places that teachers could access support materials, and they all kind of link back to each other, and they all kind of link to each other. And we do that kind of on purpose because it seems like you can tell people three or four times where something's at, but it's nice to see it over and over again. So the first thing is Support Central, and this is a site that we've been developing over time. We've worked a lot with PMO, as they've been doing initiatives, we've worked with assessment. We've worked with assessment. We've worked with several departments who had need of a centralized site. But basically, it's sort of a central support area where you can search for what you're looking for. So in this case, if I just type in Q, what it's going to do here is, the first thing it's going to do is, it's actually going to bring me up the two most popular results for Q right now, which is the Enrollment User Guide, which never goes out of style. That thing's always the most popular item, because clerical staff are constantly referring to it. But you'll notice, surprise, right now, the second most popular thing that was still out there was printing elementary school report cards. Because what it does is, it looks back for the last two weeks and says, what was the most popular based on search results? But then down below that, you've actually got the link to the site. And so you can see how it kind of previews it. So what's kind of neat is, somebody can come in here, and they really can be searching for anything, and as we add more programs on here, it gets more and more in-depth. But this is the site. There's a teacher support section. And then here, we pretty much have the two key links they referred to, which was the FAQ and the training videos. Then down below, they have some additional documents that they may need for different things. Excuse me. So the first would be like a video. And so these videos are all hosted in our Google platform, Google Drive. We put them there because it's free unlimited storage, which is great for us. We also like it because I can do things like speed it up and slow it down. So I can just come right over here, and if the person who is recording the video is like me and talked way too fast, they could slow it down. But in many cases, we kind of actually shop for a pretty low cadence on some of our videos, because people prefer that when they're watching training videos. You can speed that up. And so on a regular basis, I speed those up to like time and a half, and that seems to be about a really good speed, if you're somewhat familiar with it. And so these videos, I don't know if you can hear them, let's see. But you can kind of get the gist. It's got highlighted cursors, and it moves around, and it zooms into the details and all sorts of other things. So that's kind of the videos. The other thing that you'll see is like the FAQ. So this was a rapidly evolving document. As we go through each new sort of business process, so when it launched at the beginning of the school year, it had a bunch of things in it. As we were going through the gradebook process, it was actually the FAQ that helped us identify the error that was happening, as far as people seeing students they shouldn't see. All came through the way that help desk and the IT staff and school staff are kind of working together to help each other identify things. So as we identify a question, we kind of basically format it. The reason we do this is just because you can look at an outline view that shows everything over here. But it kind of gives you what the issue is. Is there a workaround? Is it an issue? Is it training? And if there's documents, you can see some of these actually point to a document, so you could link to a document and go to it and everything else. So that's Support Central. Inside of the platform itself, you also have a help menu, so you can come up here. This is more of your traditional sort of help that you would expect to see. So if I go down to like gradebook, I can come in here and I can see, oops. It's going to be more of those like, how do I do a category? I could click here, and it's going to show me my different categories and how to set them up, how to delete them, how to manage them, all that other stuff. And then third, right from inside the menu, I also just have a link back to Support Central. So those are kind of the three things. Again, kind of keep trying to steer people back to the same common resources in the ASD help desk. Excuse me. So that's, that is that. So the next thing that was most popular, and by the way, as I'm in here, I always forget to tell people this, but this is our training instance. So all the data is munged. And what that means is that even though you'll see names of teachers and potentially even a student, you're like, wait a minute, I think I know them. All the data's been mixed up. So it's not the right students, it's not their student IDs, it's not their grades, it's not even their course assignments in Xangle right now. So when I'm showing this to you guys, knowing that it's out there for anybody to see, know that it's kind of mixed up, okay?
And that's called munged?
Munged, yeah. I know, we come up with weird names for everything, right? So if you're looking up here, part of that customization that Ms. Melson was talking about is this My Favorites. And that's a real simple feature, but people seem to love it. And that's where, because I'm in different modules, I can pick for them to be on my startup menu. So a lot of teachers, you know, obviously, they want class attendance and gradebook and mass email. Those are kind of the three top ones, because that's what they do in the gradebook all the time. Well, it used to be that you always had to go to the special menu to find it, now you can just drop it right on your desktop. And so it's just kind of little features. So let's start with class attendance. So really, I have to pick one of my sections here. And this is kind of what it looks like. So it's going to show my kids their my class for the day, and then here's their status right there. And so if I had a student who was gone, I could simply switch that over. Somebody who came in tardy, I can change that, and then I just hit submit. So that, and as soon as it says update, save, that's my attendance. So that's what people are doing. You know, generally, secondary's doing that for each period, and elementary's doing that for morning and afternoon. And so that's kind of what that looks like.
Before you go on?
Yes.
So is this, this changes instantly? I didn't notice the excused, unexcused tardy that changes instantly based on what you, once you hit a save, update?
Correct. Once I hit submit up at the top there.
So they could have a real-time status of their students' attendance?
Correct.
And does that, oh, I know it hasn't come online, I know it's next week, for the Parent Connect, is that going to be real time for them?
Ms. President, correct. And that's already available in Xangle Parent Connect, so that, parents have always been able to see that. The main shift to the new Q Parent Connect is going to have some of the profile reports and other things that were, that were missing.
I'm sorry, Ms. Marsette.
Have we tested this out on any parents before we're throwing it out there?
Through the board president and Ms. Marsette, yes, we have. We've done extensive testing, both on ourselves as parents, but also, and Julie can speak to that, they pulled together a group of district parents to review it. All right, so that was attendance. Next thing is marks. Everybody wants to see marks. So we go into our gradebook. Here is what it kind of looks like, and right now, you'll see that I don't have any marks. And that's because up at the top there is which course I'm in. So you have to get to the right course. So I'm going to pick our math course for this, just so you can kind of see how these pieces fit together. So when I'm looking at my assignments across the top right now, I'm in kind of my spreadsheet view. These are basically the assignments I've had so far. These are my students, these are my grades. I do have to be careful about one thing up top here, which is which term I'm showing, because that does change what's available. And so sometimes when I can't see an assignment, or we get a report of a teacher who can't see an assignment, it's because they've got the term set to the wrong thing. I also can look over here at the top, where it says Students Enrolled As Of. This is where I can make adjustments for myself as a teacher. So if I was preparing a transfer student checklist, and I needed to go back and see what a student's grade was, I could actually come here, and I could either put in the date, or I can just click All Students. And since this is munged data, I can't see it. But it would show me any students that had unenrolled in my class in red. So it makes it real easy to find them. Okay? But adding a task is pretty easy. I pretty much just come over and hit this Add Task button. One thing about Q, and this is both a positive and a negative, is it's very customizable. So I can add that assignment from like four different places. And so what's hard is, depending on the training that you have, a lot of times, people think, oh, I can only go to this one place to add an assignment. But I can actually assign it, add an assignment from the spreadsheet view. I can do it by task over here. But notice I keep having that task button over here on the side. I have all these different places I can add tasks. So if I hit Add Task, though, it pops up, and basically, I have three dates that I put in there. You'll notice that they all autofill, but it's assigned on, display on, and due on. And so really, they mean exactly what they say. The assigned on is the date that I kind of assign the assignment. Display on, that's an important one, because a lot of times, teachers don't necessarily want somebody to see that assignment, especially if they're putting in assignments ahead of time, so they can change that date of when does it actually appear in Parent or Student Connect. And then the due date, so that a parent knows that. I have my title, so I can put in an example assignment. And you'll notice that as soon as I do that, it'll take the first few letters of what I put in as my title and transfer that down into that short name. Now, that can be tricky sometimes, because that's the name that you see on the spreadsheet view. So sometimes the auto abbreviation, like if I had a longer title in here, right, and I click down here, it's not going to carry all of that, because I only have a limited number of characters. Okay? I select my category, so if I'm actually assigning this to a specific category, I could put it in there, I put the number of points that I want. And then I have some other things down here that I need to check. So I can hide it, I can make it extra credit. Importantly, though, if I want the gradebook, or the item to actually show up in my gradebook, I have to check the assigned grade. Couple of quick things, too, down here. You'll see that there's the assignment group. This is what Ms. Melson was talking about earlier. I can identify students that are in different groups. And so we've seen teachers use this for a variety of reasons. If they have students that are being included into their classroom, or ELL, or, you know, they might get pulled out for different things, they can actually set up those groups. And so I can actually assign an assignment just to specific users. So let's say, for some reason, these students were actually in a different class for math, and so I didn't want them to have that assignment. I can actually uncheck them, or I could just check this box that says exclude differentiated instruction. And you'll see in a moment that that assignment now doesn't apply to them at all, so it doesn't get calculated or anything else. The other thing I can do that's just kind of exciting is, I can actually add assignments or example files. So like I could actually attach the BlackLine master of the homework I was going to give there, and I can submit it. Okay? So once I submit that assignment, you'll see those three students I excluded, they have those checkmarks that show that they're not in there. The rest of the students are ready to get graded. I'm going to flip over here real quick, just because I have a student up. Can you guys, if I scroll down now, I've got to refresh it.
You have about five minutes.
Okay. Basically, it'll pop up in here, and I can download that file and do some other things. So that is the assignments. Other than that, I think the other biggie is behavior. So people come in, and you can do behavioral referrals now from inside of Q, so I can go to Student Discipline. And it's very simple. I just come in here, I click Add. It's going to ask who I want to report this to, the incident, the types, I mean, all the things that we're kind of used to seeing. I can come in and set where it happened, on campus, off campus. Add involvement, so I would have to go pick a kid. I would have to go look. It's munged, so it makes it a little tricky sometimes. But I can grab a kid. So once I put the involvement in, I can say what they were, I hit submit. As soon as I do that, it actually sends it over to the principal. The principal can now decide what they're going to do with that incident. They can dismiss it, or they can move it into an incident with normal behavioral incident results. So it's kind of a biggie. I've got many other things I can show, but like I said, there's a lot there.
So I have a big question. So when you're doing those behavior things, does that mean they don't have to do extra paper reports anymore?
Correct, Ms. President.
Any other questions from board members? Ms. Marsette.
Great job. I like to see that, especially with the comments that we've had about the rollout, that you guys really taking a look at that to see how we could do a better job of doing that implementation as we carry forward. So, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what else? I'll just say, final comment. I actually went on this weekend and was looking at your training videos. I thought they were great, because that's a real left-brain step-by-step procedure. But I can see where, because I also observed in one of the sessions you had here, where you had a very different type of use for certain of our, certain members of our staff, and how that was necessary to do the hands-on, literally, training with them. So, thank you so much.
Madam President, I just want to say thank you. We really have an A-team in our IT, so, thank you. It's, and 3,400 people were trained, so.
We'll be, we'll be posting your grades for the session a little later, so you'll be able to see.
Yeah, so thank you very much. Well done. Madam President, now I'd like to invite Doreen Brown up, and she can introduce the next section for the work session.
Thank you, President Auguste Giesler, School Board Members and Superintendent Bishop, for this opportunity to talk about Title VI Indian Education, now Native Advisory Committee. I'm just going to give a brief update or overview in just a second, but I want to introduce one of our parent committee members, Julie Lampley. She's agreed graciously to drive across town with her daughter to give our update today, so we appreciate this opportunity. So just a little bit of a history. So Title VI Indian Education has actually been around since 1972. It became a law. It wasn't known as Title VI, it was actually Indian Education. It was actually Indian Education Chapter VII with NCLB, and now it's Chapter VI NESA, Every Student Succeeds Act. Just a little, a little side note. In Alaska, we really don't reference ourselves as Indian Indians. So the reason, one of the trickeries that I do, it's not trickery, but I say Title VI Indian Education, or T6. So just to let you know, that's one of the reasons why we do that. People don't like to be referenced as Indians, a lot of people, they're Alaska Native, and then we can go on to details another time. So one of the great things about this particular law is the parent committee. This parent committee is actually made of six parents. We meet monthly, six parents, two teachers, and three high school students. And they advise on Title VI Indian Education, and then also will give information to the school district as well. The other thing, a new component with this particular law is, now we have at-large members for every tribal entity that's within 50 miles of our radius. So now we're going to have members from Ekutna, Chickaloon, Kanik, Tionik. So I had to remember those. And did I say Ekutna? Yeah, okay. So we're going to have tribal members as well, because we want to make sure that our tribal, our tribal membership has a voice in what we're doing with Title VI Indian Education and also within the district. So with that, the three things that we really look at, I always think about as like a fork, and the tines in the fork, we think about, and we work with students on academics first and foremost, but most, more importantly, is also the culture and the language piece of it as well. And we also dabble into the social-emotional components with our students. And just one more thing, before I let Julie give you an update. We have almost 9,000 Native students in this district. I always tease and say, you're either currently our client, you've been our client, or you're going to be our client. So I just try to think about that from a straight-line perspective or a nationwide perspective. We're an amazing district, and people love to come and be part of us. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Julie. Thank you.
Thank you, President Auguste Giesler, School Board and Superintendent Bishop, for this opportunity to provide a Title VI Indian Education update. My name is Julie Lampley. I am a parent on the NAC, the Native Advisory Committee Board, and I just want to give you a quarterly update on what we're doing and what we've done within the past quarter. Okay, so for November, November is Native American Heritage Month. The cultural enhancement staff across the ASD are supporting the staff and students in acknowledgement and celebration of Alaska Native and American Indian culture. One event that is occurring in 2017 is Rockymarks, November 15. Individuals nationally are asked to wear their moccasins, mucklucks, indigenous footwear, and/or wear a turquoise awareness ribbon to visibly support indigenous cultural heritage. Many of the students groups across the school districts have been promoting the event. Secondly, last month, middle school and high school groups were sponsored by the Title VI program to participate in the 2017 Elders and Youth Conferences at the Alaska Federation of Natives, which was held in Anchorage. The conferences, which will be held in Anchorage in 2018, allowing for Anchorage School District youth and have an opportunity to fully participate in the conferences in large numbers. We had 153 students. The Title VI program continues to host evening basketball open gym and academic tutoring at Windler Middle School for middle school and high school students. Alaska Native professional basketball player and Nike N7 ambassador Damon Bellhollier will be at the ASD Title VI Day Basketball Camp for fourth to 12th grade students on November 11th at Begich Middle School. You can see our Title VI website and staff photo for the flyers and application form. The NAC has two open student positions. Please contact Title VI. Finally, the Alaska Native Science and Engineer Program at the University of Alaska Anchorage, known as the ANSET, is again partnering with the ASD for the ANSET Middle School Academy for ASD. The Middle School Academy is occurring at UAA January 16th to 27th, 2018. Applications for the academy are June, November 17th, 2017. Please let tribal students and families know about the opportunity and upcoming deadlines for more information. You can contact anchorageasd12.org/TitleVI. The website, yes. So that's all we have for now.
Thank you so much for their report.
And could we get a list of those dates?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
And they're posted on our website as well.
Okay. We don't need a list. We'll just go to the website.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President, we actually could have given the Q folks a little more time if they wanted. We have eight minutes prior to our focus on staff and students, so maybe just a break.
Four minutes.
That's not correct time.
That's not correct, okay.
And I would hate to go fast if people were still coming. It's 5:23, so seven minutes.
Okay. We'll have a recess for seven minutes.
Board members, thank you. And we'll have to get someone to fix an analog clock on the wall. Dr. Bishop, I'm going to turn it over to you for this next section.
Thank you, Madam President. And at this point in time in our board meeting, our program tonight, we are going to focus on staff and students. And two board retreats ago, the board had a large, complex dialogue in regard to what makes ASD great. And they certainly related back to the people who are in the system, whether that be students, staff, parents, community members. Really, it takes us all to make ASD great. So, with that, they conjured up that every board meeting then, we're going to give thanks for the people who make ASD great. With that, I would like to call up some folks who are phenomenal teachers, who absolutely make ASD great. So, it's Brad Goats here. There's Brad. Come on up, Brad. Did I pronounce it right, Brad? Yes. Brad Getz. Brad Getz. With an O in his name. Sorry about that. Yeah, nice to meet you, Brad. So, congratulations. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about what makes Brad so great. Being in front of the classroom is second nature to Mr. Goats, Getz. He's been teaching fifth grade at Kit Kade Elementary School for 17 years. Brad is an old-school teacher who encourages students to take personal responsibility. And they're learning about Western expansion in US history and partial quotients in math subjects. They work hard to understand. He added, "They make such great gains over the school year, and I don't think they even realize how much they learn in a single year." "It's at this age," Brad says, not your age, but his age. The kids' age. Or both. Yeah, yeah. "You can joke with the students, and they understand, and even chime in with their own jokes. He makes this classroom fun and feels students learn better when they're having a good time as well." Brad noted that "When you're enjoying life, laughing and giggling, it can make a little bit, make it all a little bit easier." Brad's goal is for students to have a sense of accomplishment and know that they can handle just about anything when they get to the end of the school year. Brad moved to Alaska from Washington State and has spent previous summers commercial fishing. He most recently has been helping with beluga research in our state. So, nice to meet you, Brad. And it sounds like I would love to be in your class. Would you like to tell anyone about your class as well? And that's about it. So, he was honored on television as a Teacher of the Week. And so, our board wanted to take the time to meet him and honor him as well. Brad Getz. We'll do a, please stay up here. Rebecca Seedorf. Is Rebecca Seedorf present? How about Doug Williams? Now, let me tell you about Doug, whose name is phonetically correct. Just kidding. Just kidding, Brad. Okay. This, to my left, your right, is Doug Williams. And he says, he needs three things as a teacher, passion, patience, and a lot of coffee. Doug teaches Language Arts at Mears Middle School, a place that feels like coming home. He attended Mears when he was a middle school student and is able to put himself in his student's shoes. He's very open with the students. Growing up, Language Arts was my worst subject, the worst, Williams shared. It just took one teacher, one teacher when I was in high school, that turned it all around for me, and I've become very passionate about it. Originally a pre-med student, Brad received a master's degree in teaching at the University of Alaska Anchorage and has been in the classroom ever since. He isn't afraid to stray from his lesson plan, going with the flow, depending on how his students are feeling or the day of the week. Brad said, "If I'm seeing them give me some type of negative energy, and they're not feeling their best, then it's time for me to abandon what I had prepared for that day and adapt to their needs. At the end of the day, it really is about their needs and how I can meet their needs." The school board and administration would like to join the community in recognizing Brad Williams, and thank you for your dedication to ASD and for making ASD great. Nice to meet you, Brad. Would you like to say anything to this crowd? No? Okay. Thumbs up, he says. Is Kath, is it Catherine Valet or Valet? Valley? Caitlin. Caitlin Valet. To my left is Caitlin Valet. Caitlin has always known she wanted to work with kids. She started with subbing and went back to get her master's degree. Caitlin teaches second grade at Mountain View Elementary School. She's patient, optimistic, and works with each individual student to make sure their needs are met. Social-emotional learning is incorporated into her classroom daily. Caitlin says, "That starts with helping students to understand their feelings and identifying them." She credits her success to building those relationships. If they trust you, and you know they feel safe in the classroom, then they're going to feel happy at school. They're going to feel that they know how successful they truly can be. Caitlin grew up in the Butte, hey, in the valley. Caitlin Valley is Moga Valley. And loves teaching at Mountain View Elementary because of its diversity. "It's unlike anywhere else," she added. "You have kids from all over the world, and not only am I teaching them, but I'm learning about their culture and the things in their lives." It is very, my pleasure, actually, Caitlin, to meet you. Congratulations for being a Teacher of the Week. Would you like to say anything, Caitlin? No. And I'd like to just share that we had, at the beginning of the first quarter, besides Caitlin and Brad and Doug, of course Rebecca Seedorf, did she come in? Ah, Rebecca's here. Come on up, Rebecca Seedorf. I need to tell the folks about you. This is Rebecca Seedorf, and she's pre-kindergarten. She teaches a pre-kindergarten class at Nunaka Valley Elementary School. And it's excelling socia, she says, "Excelling socially is just as important as improving scholastically." The most important thing as students are learning is how to socialize in her preschool. Social-emotional learning is probably the biggest part of my classroom, and it's teaching us all how to live with each other. Rebecca has a lot of experience helping little kids get along. Prior to teaching at Nunaka Valley, she ran an at-home, in-home childcare and worked at a Montessori school. In fact, her Montessori background plays a huge role in her teaching today. The lesson plan often involves a healthy dose of playtime. With a pleasant personality and calm demeanor, Rebecca feels right at home in the classroom. She was encouraged to pursue a career in teaching four years ago while working at an accounting firm. Great, we can have an accountant. That's cool. With preschoolers, they're going to grow up so smart. Okay, so, experience and natural ability to teach aside, she says it's her love of her students that drives her to succeed. Rebecca has taught at Nunaka Valley Elementary School for four years now and has been a Montessori certified teacher for 10 years. Rebecca, congratulations. Would you like to share anything? No. So, also, Rebecca was a Teacher of the Week, and for her outstanding work, we also want to thank you. And I want to share, is Paul Kosoval here? Or, that was it? So, please come forward. Alice, is that Alison?
Alison Stengel.
Yeah, I don't think she, we knew she was. All right. Please come forward. Let's take a photo. Thank you very much. And we also have another award for a Teacher of Excellence. So, if Betsy Paskeban could come forward? How'd I do on your name, Betsy?
Two syllable, she got it.
Paxban, okay. Well, Getz was one syllable, but it spelled crazy. So, I will always remember it though now, and remember you, Brad. So, to my left is Betsy, and she's been awarded the 2017 Terry Higley Teacher of Excellence Award by the Alaskans for Language Acquisition. The Terry Higley Teacher of Excellence Award is for an outstanding K-12 educator of a language other than English, named in memory of Terry Higley, a French teacher who served in Alaska at Bartlett High School. It honors a world language teacher who is also known to go above and beyond in promoting world languages, bridging cultures, motivating students, and being an inspiration in the school climate. Additionally, Betsy will represent Alaska at the Pacific Northwest Council on Foreign Languages. She will be a candidate for the title of the 2018 Teacher of the Year for the Council, PNCFL, and has the opportunity to represent the entire Pacific Northwest region of language teachers at the 2019 Annual American Council on Teaching of Foreign Languages. Betsy has been a driving force in the Alaska language teaching world, known to teach with the students' interest at heart. She has been recognized for her work in promoting Japanese and immersion programs, contributing information and lessons surrounding second language acquisition, creating their curriculum for the KCC International Trades Program, and promoting SEL tactics in the classroom. Betsy is a whirling dervish? A professional development. Yeah. Presenting frequently at a multitude of local, regional, and national conferences. Her sessions frequently rank the highest positive feedback at the annual conferences, and she has done much to put the Alaskan world language education names on the map. Please join the school board and administration in congratulating, congratulating her on this exceptional achievement. And I am going to have you speak. You can't turn the mic away. And tell us, oh, good, good. Tell us how you learned your second language and just about your experience here and what you do. And I want you to know, I received a note from, I believe, the state of New York, that I folks visited up here, and they said that our immersion programs are world, by far, one of the world's best. So, thank you. Yes, so, share with us.
All right, I'll do that. I have some things to say. We really have to give Brandon Locke and his predecessor, Janice Gulitz, and credit for all of those immersion programs. They know everything there is to know about them and supported them. But I have a few remarks to make to the board, so.
Absolutely.
Thank, so, with this annual award, my initial thoughts were, they counted wrong. And so, maybe it ought to have gone to someone else. But now that I have this, I want to say that this is a perfect opportunity for me, for one year, to represent world languages and the intersection of world languages and human rights and social justice in promoting our indigenous Alaskan languages as well as international languages. And so, I think this is a perfect platform for all of us to start thinking about the role of world languages in terms of social justice and promotion of, yeah, our local languages first, and then international languages as well. All right, thank you so much. I learned Japanese. The long, hard way. But initially, University of Alaska Fairbanks had a visiting professor from Stanford, and she was an amazing person. And then, so, I studied under her tutelage, and then I worked for a company called Duty Free Shoppers as a buyer in the business world, and worked there, and then attended a lot of classes since then. as a buyer in the business world, and worked there, and then attended a lot of classes since then. But now I go back to Japan, oh, this is the fun part. Every summer I go back to Japan to a tiny island that you could cycle around in about nine hours, and I do. And there are more deer there and monkeys than there are people, about 10,000. So it's the antithesis of what you might think of as Tokyo. And then I take my three daughters, who are in their twenties now, and we go back and stay at a little Airbnb where they work and serve international guests who come to climb, and look at a tree that is older than Jesus. And that's how I learned my language. I'll hit you up. Please stay up here. I learned that from. Okay. Would you like to come up as well, Brandon and Principal Johnson Harris? So we'll all take a picture with our gal who's going to travel the world and represent not only Alaska and the Pacific Northwest, but ASD as well.
And thank you, ladies and gentlemen. With that, the focus on staff and students has ended, and it's been a delight to share so many teachers' accomplishments with you. Thank you.
And I will now entertain a motion to move into executive session for my vice president. I move that we move into executive session to discuss litigation and negotiations.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Work session is concluded, and we are now in executive session. Thank you.